City residents as well as other members of the public who are interested in the conversations around sustainability this evening. Uh, I want to give a warm welcome to uh all the candidates for Tempe City Council and Mayor. Uh Mayor Corey Woods, David Lucifer, Hugo Tapia and Nikki Amber. Um first and foremost, I want to acknowledge the twenty-three native nations that have inhabited this land. Uh Tempe occupies ancestral territories of the Akamal Oor and the Peepash communities whose stewardship and sustainable management of these lands allow us to be here. I also acknowledge the ancestors of San Pueblo, a active community whose land we occupy that was cared for and developed by the Hispanic community, only to be systematically erased uh in the early nineteen hundreds. These are just words, but they stand as a looming reminder of our responsi- responsibilities and obligations to these communities. Uh, this event has graciously been organized through Arizona Forward and uh as Lori said, an organization that strives to bring business and civic leaders together to advance sustainability and economic vitality throughout the state. Um, the reason I'm here, my name is uh Jake Swanson. I'm the sustainability scholar and professional who has lived in Tempe for over a decade. Uh, and in the valley my entire life, I'm excited to have the opportunity to facilitate this forum and dialogue this evening. While I serve as a commissioner on the Sustainability and Resiliency Commission uh for the city of Tempe, and some of my insights and questions are informed through my experiences there, I am functioning as a private citizen in this forum. So before we start, I just want to say that uh it it's quite remarkable to me that this style of forum around sustainable futures uh has a defined and desired space. Um, though these futures require a lot of work, um, I believe that it's certainly a sign of progress and positivity that this engagement has a space now. Uh, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and start our questions. Um, so the first question, um, sustainability, while a vitally important and ongoing process, is a vague buzzword without clear implications or directions when just used alone. How do you define sustainability in Tempe and what does a sustainable future for Tempe mean? And uh, we'll go ahead and start with you, Nikki. Would you, is that alright? Would you mind? Oh, you'll have to unmute, sorry.
Yep, it's totally fine. I'm used to it. My last name starts with an A, so I've been uh kind of the lead off on most of the forums anyway, so it all works. Like, you know what? For me, sustainability is not just um best practices or guiding principles. For me, it's like the definition is using less and preserving more of our, you know, natural resources and the energies that we use. Um, and in order to achieve that goal, I think we need to be a little bit more of a resilient and sustainable as a city. You know, we need to make, start making tangible investments in green technology across the sectors of all of the city's operations. Um, I talked about it earlier that I was part of the S E B committee and um one of the things that we kind of focused on there was on road maintenance and storm water management. Uh, so it's city Tempe kind of partnering with uh other cities in the state and uh with our private businesses and our HOAs and our neighborhoods, you know, just kind of trying to lead the way to kickstart and incentivize private investments in these technologies. Um, at least at a local level, you know, just so that we're prepared. You know, for the worst, the accelerated global climate change, which uh last summer has pretty brutal. So for all of those climate deniers out there, I just can't imagine that they, that they're still on that bandwagon. Uh, you know, and I also think we need to engage our local communities in a meaningful way. I myself am a huge proponent of what the city's already doing. Um, I switched all of my, my uh grass to low-flow sprinkler heads. I have used that water alert system so many times. I mean, I would have absolutely had no idea because if you're not home whenever your, you know, sprinkler head pops off and you become a fountain in your backyard, you're not gonna notice it. Um, I've also replaced all of my toilets from a low-flow standpoint, so continuing that, those type of educational, um, those type of educational programs have been huge. Um, and you know what? I'd also like to work with our HOA communities. I've actually knocked on some doors while I've going around and folks are telling me that they are required by their HOAs to overseed in the winter, which I'm not exactly sure that they can allow. You know, that that's legal for HOAs to do that, but I would love to, from a communication and education standpoint, work with uh with the city's um HOA folks and make sure that uh that's not, that's not a requirement anymore.
Thank you, Nikki. That was comprehensive and uh from bottom to top some things.
Three minutes?
You go, you would like to connect?
Sure, um, you know, I mean, I think that um sustainability is one of the key elements of our future, right? So we should work on the premise uh that we have to develop uh really a city that meets present needs without really compromising future generations from having the ability to meet their needs, right? So um, I think it's, it's really about not just our current status, uh but also making sure that we're um thinking about future generations as uh as they coming forward um and we're moving forward um uh for our, our kids, our grandkids or and, and beyond, because I think it's uh, it's important to look at those things. Um, when it comes to sustainability, I think it includes uh the fiscal responsibility. I think it's important that we have that. Uh, and really have responsible economic development um that really addresses the needs that we have to be able to have uh the ability to develop um, yeah, the infrastructures that we need to uh, to, to put those things in place. Um, and one thing that is uh, is critical is really to make it equitable e- equitable to all, right, to all citizens, uh um, not just to those that can afford certain things, but also to those that want to be participants of this process. Um, and we as a uh, as a city need to, need to also look at that and and make sure that we're engaging those communities that may have um um, maybe not the, the, the means to participate uh fully, um, and we can engage with them, but in that process. Um, so that full social engagement of the community, I think it's really important um uh in this process. Um, we also need a custom, really evaluated process uh to make sure that we're evaluating the effectiveness of our efforts uh on a consistent basis uh when we move forward. Um because that's gonna give us really a good measure of um how we're utilizing the, our resource um uh and development um uh responsibly. So, so I think we, you know, it kind of, it all encompasses into the view of um what we're able to provide our future generations um with the responsibility that we have in this space and this moment um moving forward.
Thank you, Hugo. Also a very encompassing and uh full response. Uh, for, for those at home, I'm just gonna repeat the first question between uh every two because I know that uh I have a short-term memory. Um, so the question is, uh while vitally important uh and on, and an ongoing process, uh sustainability can be a vague buzzword without clear implications or directions when used alone. How do you define sustainability in Tempe and what does a sustainable future for Tempe mean? David, do you want to take that?
Man, I love these multiple, multiple uh issues all in one question, but um, let me, let me, let me start uh, I'll, I'll try and be uh general and then, you know, work it down to, you know, the more specific. And, and uh sustainability, I, I, I believe in, in, in my, my particular view uh is, is more than just the environment. I think it goes wholly to um equity across um all stratas. Uh, and so um, you know, a healthy community is a thriving community kind of thing. I know that sounds a little bit uh easy to say, but um, you know, what, what we need is um a, a system, uh defined parameters. I think we need a clear and strong vision. Uh, and once we, we, and, and, and we have to be able to live and expand as, as a definition of quote sustainability uh uh expands. I mean, we, we, we need to keep up with that uh and what it means. And right now, it means to me uh equity again across um all stratas. Um, and how do we get there? Well, we do need processes. Uh, we do need procedures and one of the, one of the first few that I think we should, we should be looking at is um you know, uh requirements, not only what we require of, you know, people in the community, uh be that a private citizen or, or uh, or an enterprise. Uh, we need to hold ourselves as a city to higher standards. And that means that we probably have to require that. Our next step then, I think, once we show good faith, is to require um folks who want to come, live here, work here, build here, uh develop here, that we require that they are held to the same standard as the city. And we've already put ourselves out theoretically as, as, you know, good, good stewards. And so um, I think that, and, and you know, some of this stuff costs money. But uh, I also know that there is a plethora, a pool of, of, of money out there in philanthropic, uh in, in government grants, uh and, and no, we, we, we can't do it all ourselves. It's not, and, and it shouldn't be. Uh, we do need to spread costs uh because it's something that, that uh, i- i- it's something that concerns everyone. So everyone has to be responsible. Everyone has to come together. We do have to collaborate. And, and my final thought is um that I think the time for talk is over. We are on the clock to distinction if we don't act. And I know that sometimes that, you know, seeing those faraway visions, those end goals is very difficult. But we as leaders in the city uh need to promote that and, and uh enhance it and, and do what we can to uh bring about those changes that we need. And those changes, there, there's those standards and all are, are gonna change as we, as we either become more successful or we become uh less successful. Uh, then we'll have to redefine those things, so um I think that, I think I answered all of those.
Yeah, I think you, you answered, you answered both of them. I think I might need to give you three or four uh options next time. Did too good. Alright, Corey.
Sounds good. Well, no, I, I, I really appreciate the opportunity. When I, when I think about sustainability, I just think about sort of decreasing traffic congestion. I think about lowering carbon reductions. Uh, how do we do things to mitigate the urban heat island effect? And of course, a lot of the other candidates talked about this as well. How do you prevent the displacement of families who've lived in Tempe frankly for decades? Those, from my perspective, all sort of encompass my own definition of what a sustainable community is all about. And I think when you talk about what the city needs to be doing, moving forward in, in those areas, uh, it means really sort of living it. You know, we just recently uh adopted a uh green building code, uh which is voluntary for the first code cycle, meaning for the first three years for private sector developers. But it's mandatory for any city buildings that happen to get built. Anything we build from here on out at the city of Tempe has to absolutely be certified green, no ifs, ands, or buts. I'm excited from my perspective, even with the voluntary uh kind of initiation of the green building code for a lot of private developers. Uh, I think there are certain components of that. If we see in the next twelve to eighteen months that things are working out exactly the way that we think they would, I think we should look to accelerate that schedule from not making those things uh voluntary, but actually getting to a more mandatory code even quicker. So I think that's also part of trying to remain on the cutting age, would it, cutting edge when it comes to sustainability in your community. And also just from my perspective as well, I try very hard to live out these things in my own personal life. One of the reasons why I happen to live in the middle of downtown, I will be celebrating my four-year anniversary as a downtown Tempe resident this coming May, is because I really wanted to live in a more urban, walkable environment. Uh, where the best days that I have are the days that I don't have to get in my car at all. I can actually walk to work. I can walk to all of my assorted meetings uh without ever getting in an automobile at any given point during the day. And that was my own effort to try to find a way to make sure that I was lowering kind of the urban heat island effect and not putting more pollutants into the air. And I know all of the candidates here uh have our own ways in which we're trying to also help Tempe with our sustainability goals. So from my perspective, it encompasses all of those things uh from what we do at the city of Tempe to how we actually live out our own personal lives. And so I, I, I really am excited to have this conversation this evening.
Well, uh, we, we tapped on funding, we tapped on uh water, we, we tapped on um walkable cities, uh all questions that are in store. So uh you kind of set the stage for us. Um, so the second question has a little bit of a lead up so that the public um can wrap their minds around it because it's some technical jargon from the city. Uh, so greens, green storm water and shade infrastructure, which greens, green storm water is managing water um that comes in storms for the desert um and shade infrastructure is, as it sounds, shade um are essential for desert cities. Uh, greens, green storm water infrastructure utilizes water resources to support a more thriving urban ecology. It reduces infrastructure damage over time and can positively impact social equity through making a more pedestrian-friendly city, while shade infrastructure can reduce vulnerability to heat and lessen the burden of heat on the city. A hurdle with further developing this infrastructure is funding. Cities that are climate action update, which is the city of Tempe's climate action update, uh suggests uh that there's a few cities that are considered advanced in the space of green storm water and shade infrastructure, uh which is a place that we strive to get to. Uh, now those cities that we consider advanced have permanent funding in that space. What suggestions for permanent funding might you have if elected as it pertains to green water storm, green storm water and shade infrastructure? And for this one, we're gonna start with Hugo.
I think we should have started with uh the mayor because um we're looking at funding. But um, in terms of um, you know, I thoroughly support uh just improving our infrastructure um to manage uh and improve our green storm water and shade, really all around the city. I think uh, I think in, in reality, um while I was knocking on doors all summer, it was um, it was evident to me that um that our environment is changing. I mean, I used to be very much an outdoor type of, type of guy and um there's a significant difference uh between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty. And I, and I think it's uh, it's important to begin to look at those things. Climate change is really telling us that we have to develop uh these systems, uh systems that will mitigate really the negative effects. Um, and give really our future generations the best opportunity for a healthy life and a healthy community. Um, otherwise, we're gonna be in trouble, right? So um, so I think, and I think we have to be innovative in our funding source. Um, we have to begin to look at what are Um, I think the issue is really to begin to look at how innovatively we're going to do something like that when, you know, everybody is throwing me off.
Just wanted to throw a little in there to, to keep you guessing.
Because we have to look at the fact that our communities are, are having difficulty meeting their daily life to begin with. And so, so putting another type of um kind of fiscal bur- burden on them, it's um, it's difficult. But I think if we are able to articulate that in a way that is going to make sense to them, uh and it's not going to just make sense for the here and now, but also for what is coming. Uh, our, our community is very family-oriented and values families uh and the development of their families. So, so we have to kind of look beyond um to be able to develop that level of funding that is gonna be meaningful. So, so I think it's, I think it's important to have um that as a, as part of the structure of our city uh as we move forward. Uh, because that's the only way uh that we're going to be making um or have the ability to make those innovative projects uh come alive.
Thank you, Hugo, for navigating through those two uh hurdles. Uh, that was a great response. Uh, David, would you like to go next?
Sure, now I'll, I'll start this conversation or this, this portion of the program with the, the way I started it. You know, we, we are trying to beat the clock to, you know, to uh extinction. And so there is a sense of urgency. That said, I do have a finance background. Uh, I've, I've helped finance everything from uh, well, at the time, the largest solar um panel uh fu- solar farm in the country at the time. That was about thirty, forty years ago. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm very, very aware of the fact that there are a, a, a number of, of financial instruments out there, including, you know, our ability to tax. And I know that's, you know, that's a, that's a bad three-letter word, but um, but there, there, there's, you know, there's uh industrial developments. There's, there's um, there's, there's bonding, which the city has, has capacity. Um, and so uh, you know, infrastru- this is, this is a capital project. And, and I have no idea how much it costs, nor what the, 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 just the financial benefits are. Um, uh, along with the uh, you know, the sustainable elements. But I do know that we, we, we live next to the uh, uh country's largest research public university. And they have a huge department that's focused on that. And I suspect that if I called Michael Crow, um, and he usually takes my calls, um, if I wanted to find out more about it, more detail and, and specifically, you know, how to implement it, what are the, again, what are the benefits, what are the costs? Uh, we could, we could run through that. Uh, and, and I would, you know, I, I wouldn't expect that I'm the only one who, who would be talking about this or, or wanting to know about it. I'm sure uh the mayor and, and several of the council members would want to participate as well. Uh, I think it makes a whole lot of sense. Uh, we, we could, a- and we're all fast learners here. This is, you know, we're, we, we don't have to worry about the lack of intellectual capacity here, that's for sure. Uh, but we, again, we're, we're trying to beat the clock here. And so there's a sense of urgency. Uh, I, I feel very, very comfortable in saying, I think, you know, if, if, if this has a, a cost benefit that, that makes sense for us, uh just on a financial basis, uh and, and I would assume that it makes sense for us on a, on an ecological basis, then uh, let's, let's get to it. Um, let's, let's uh, uh figure out where we have to go from here and uh, you know, g- get to that finish line.
Thank you, David. Uh, just to reiterate the question for the public, uh what suggestions for permanent funding for green wa- green storm water and shade infrastructure if elected? Corey, go ahead and take it away.
Uh, excuse me, let me just say, plant trees.
I, 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 I agree with that, absolutely. Well, I, I, I was gonna say, uh, it actually dovetails really well into my answer. So first thing, just regarding the funding, I mean, we've talked about this at previous forums, that budgets are a reflection of the city council and of our city's values. And it's one thing to get up and talk about something, but it's another thing to make sure that there is a sustained revenue stream to support those policies or initiatives. One of the first things I remember when I became mayor was having conversations with candidate about that. And we had real, like, early discussions saying, look, at one point, the Sustainability and Resilience Department was just getting up and running and the Sustainability Commission made up of residents was just getting up and running. But we've been up and running now for quite a few years. And at some point, we really have to, we get to a place where the council is actually taking the work that this department and this commissioner are doing and actually passing them into ordinance and making them the law of the city of Tempe. Because otherwise, we're just sitting here having conversations unto ourself, and that's not productive. And at some point, if people realize that, they're gonna start leaving. And so that's one of the first things we started working on when I became mayor was saying, I appreciate the work that the Sustainability Commission and our department internally have done, but we as a council have to actually start passing meaningful policies that show people that we're serious. On the other hand, though, you have to make sure that there's money to fund those priorities. We did a very similar thing with affordable housing with our Hometown for All program that the council unanimously passed uh seven to zero back in January of twenty twenty-one. I said, look, we can't just talk about the need for additional affordable and attainable housing. We need to create a dedicated revenue stream. So my perspective is, when it comes to these matters concerning sustainability, we have to find a way in the city budget through the general fund to ensure that these priorities are, are funded, not on a one-time basis, but frankly consistently. I don't mind if we are trying to find ways to seek out grants of, you know, maybe one-time money in the form of a one, two, or three-year grant to get a program up and running. But once we recognize that that program works and it's actually been tested and vetted, we have to identify a sustained revenue source within our city's general fund to ensure that those programs actually last. And, and, and just on, 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 you know, the last point, whatever, about, you know, sort of trees and things of that nature. You know, that's one of the things we're doing even in the downtown right now. When it comes to this twenty-two million dollar downtown Tempe refresh program to really fix up our downtown Mill Avenue space. You know, we are, have a downtown full of ficus trees. And a lot of people love the ficus trees and think that, you know, they're beautiful and they're green and they provide a lot of shade cover. But they are frankly non-native to the area and they are basically sucking water out of the environment that we could ill afford to lose. And even the Arizona Department of Water Resources will no longer let you replant ficus. An environmental sustainability standpoint in the city of Tempe, but we cannot afford when it comes to these new projects, whether it's uh in the downtown or at Tempe Beach Park or in any street in the city of Tempe or any park, to be putting in trees that are frankly not native to the area and frankly have invasive root systems or gonna suck up water that we can't afford to lose. So I think it's one, that sustainable revenue stream that allows these priorities to be consistently funded year over year, regardless of who the mayor or members of the city council are. But number two, it's making sure in the decisions you make about the buildings that we build and about the trees that we plant, that they are actually good for the environment and they're not taking away natural resources that we can't afford to lose.
Thank you, Corey. Nikki. Uh, you're, uh, you gotta unmute, Nikki. I know you and then I'm doing a while, so I understand.
Um, so anyway, I think it's probably important to see even start. I mean, where I live in South Tempe, we actually don't have stormwater drains. So on, for my house and the property that I live on, I'm actually required to retain all of the rainwater on mine. So I've been doing that, you know, for, for a long time now, so, and it's fantastic. And, you know, I really kind of wish that type of program uh would kind of be more utilized in other areas, even if there are green stormwater. Uh, if there are stormwater drains, uh because you know what? I mean, it's not just my problem, it's everybody's problem. And I actually, you know, thanks to the city, I, during my time with the S E B committee, uh I actually got the incredible honor to go down to Tucson and take a look at what it is that they're doing down there. I actually met, met Brad Lancaster, which I'm sure a lot of you folks know who he is. It's just kind of like the, the guru of rainwater harvesting. He took us on a tour of his um, of his neighborhood where he basically had to go to the city of Tucson and get it's no longer to be illegal to where they hurt, uh cut some of the curbs to where the rainwater wasn't just going into the storm drains, it was actually going, you know, into some of the little, you know, living green infrastructure on the side streets, the median vegetation. I mean, they're already doing that down there. And honestly, I don't think that that costs a lot. So from a permanent revenue standpoint, you know, just kind of promoting some of the programs that they're already doing down in Tucson would be, I think, a fantastic idea. Um, you know, we're talking about the green codes and not being mandatory for some of the, or for We're talking about the green codes and not being mandatory for some of the, or for any of the private development, you know, so maybe. Kind of like Corey was talking about the Hometown For All program, you know, maybe doing something to where, you know, when you give carrots out to those. Developers or people who are building new buildings, one of those carrots may be, hey, you know what, if you decided you're not going to build some of these green codes. Maybe a different option for you would be to, you know, donate some of your money or to, you know. Help fund a grant program for other folks that wanna do it, but this does not have the. You know, financial opportunity, you have to do something like that, so I know that's not necessarily the. You know, an ongoing general fund revenue source, but at least until we can get to where we can identify something like that, that would be. That would be an option. Um, I know we talked a little bit about the heat island and we're talking about the shade trees. You know, but why not talk about, you know, we are, the city is on the cusp of putting a bond on the uh ballot last. In the upcoming fall election. Uh, I worked a lot with some folks in the S E D committee where we were trying to get some pilot proj-. Projects for instituting and integrating, you know, the pool payment program in the city, especially in some of our neighborhood streets. And in our park, parking lots, because you can't, you know, the miles per hour there, you can use some of those pool payments, I think it's a, I remember correctly. As you may, you may remember, uh, I think it's thirty-five miles an hour is the maximum. Uh, but kind of going and trying to get maybe some federal grant programs which require a local match. And if we're going to start accelerating these, you know, these. Fixing some of these neighborhood roads, maybe try to utilize some of the federal money to integrate some of the pool payment programs. So that we can actually start, you know, bringing down that poverty, especially in areas where you're gonna be walking with your kids and you're walking with your dog. And you're, you know, out of the parks, you know, trying in those really hot months during the summer, it's hard. A medium, some of that heat island, heat island.
Thank you very much. Uh, I heard a lot about family, uh, family-oriented future planning, urgency, consistent funding, trees and learning from best practices. Uh, which all sound excellent moving forward, so. Uh, the next question that we have uh is gonna be. Can you give us an example of how you have supported Tempe residents in achieving a climate or livability outcome? And uh, we'll go ahead and start with you, Corey.
So, a couple of things uh I can think of off the top of my head, I mean, one. You know, the adoption of the green building code, I think is really critically important. Uh, we've talked earlier about the rebates that we offer people to. Uh, install low-flow toilets in their homes or to replace their front and backyard with zero escaping. Uh, they will get some kind of a, a financial rebate back from the city, but obviously that helps to further green. The city of Tempe and, and, and obviously inevitably saves them money. We are trying for uh any sort of new multifamily apartment complex that comes online these days. To really push them for a lot of uh E V chargers out onsite. And that's something we've been very successful in doing, so for a lot of the folks who are coming and living in those buildings. They are gonna have brand-new fast-charging E V stations right there on site to ensure that you can encourage more people. To purchase and use electric vehicles, uh, if they so choose to have a car at all. I think it's, I think it's also encouraging more developments like what we've seen at Cul-de-sac on Apache Boulevard. Where you have your first car-free community in the entire country that's working out exceptionally well. And there are some times where, I remember a person told me once, well, why would someone wanna live in a community without a car? That doesn't seem like it's gonna work. Well, the place is fully leased and the restaurants and the shops that are currently on that site are working tremendously. I think that's one of the things that we have to continue to get across to people. I think of the, I think of the theme song from Different Strokes, which of course I am old enough to remember. Uh, that, you know, what might be right for you may not be right for some. And the fact of the matter is, you know, there are some people who may not really wanna live in a car-free community, but obviously. There is a large group of people nowadays of all different age ranges who want to frankly live. In that kind of a community where they can take the light rail, take modern streetcar, bicycle, or even walk frankly to their destination. So I think those are all things that the city of Tempe is doing, everything from, you know, offering those sort of cash rebates for doing. You know, green, sustainable things in your own private home, to really trying to encourage developments that come online to have those E V chargers. Or to have fewer cars. We're, we're actually gonna be exploring that at some point too as well, about how do we actually kind of reduce parking minimums? How do we make sure that in, in a downtown urban environment, like what I live in right now, that's frankly uh extremely walkable? How do we make sure that we're not over-parking future developments? That we actually use that space to create additional housing opportunities that this city really actually desperately needs. To be prepared for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, but not just encourage parking, which frankly isn't very useful in an urban, walkable environment. So I think all of those things are things that the city council and city staff have been very currently engaged in. That I do think help us get to our green sustainability goals and really ensure that we're proactively combating climate change and not just simply being reactive.
Alright, I remembered to unmute myself that time. But you know what, I, I'm not an incumbent, so I, I'm not gonna lie. I haven't been like super involved in a lot of this stuff that Corey just talked about. Um, I'm a firm believer in the E V chargers. I absolutely love the cul-de-sac idea, I actually to- took a tour of it. Um, would love to see not just the city of Tempe, but also the city of Phoenix and the city of Mesa. You know, some of the other cities that are now starting to get on board with the light rail, like those are fantastic opportunities. In order to uh continue programs like that. Um, from personally, you know, something that I've done. You know, much smaller scale, obviously, you know, I've been a member of the panel for the city's mayor. A lot of the neighborhoods secure funding for doing stuff like changing their HOA landscaping into zero escaping. Planting new trees around their neighborhood, especially uh trees that are not super water-hungry trees. Um, I've. You know, HOA, every time something comes up and I vote for in favor of, you know, planting new trees, we just planted probably like. I wanna say fifty in my neighborhood in the last year alone, just trying to increase the, just the shade canopy around, around our community. And as for sustainability programs that Tempe should invest more deeply in. You know, I think we should look at enhancing some of Tempe's rebate and grant programs to remote water and uh efficiency. I think, talked about it a little bit earlier, the ones that I use, you know, replace all of my toilets whenever I moved into. This house that uh was built in the eighties and there were some water-guzzling toilets, I have to tell you. I replaced all of my sprinklers with low flow, I have stopped overseeding in the winter because, I mean, it's just ridiculous, why do you need grass then? Uh, those water usage alerts have been a lifesaver, not just for me conserving water, but also for my pocketbook. Not gonna lie, uh, would have had some major, major water bills. So increasing the education program to let other residents know that those programs are out there and to utilize them, because not a lot of people. I feel like still, still, they, they still don't know about them. Um, I talk to my neighbors about it all the time and they are. Shocked that the city is doing some of these programs like that, so maybe doing a little bit more of an educational outreach with them. And doing an educational outreach with some of the small businesses, I mean, a lot of. Our small businesses are struggling with higher operating costs, uh, so maybe helping them with some type of grant programs. So that they can achieve a little bit more of the water savings, uh, a little bit more of the energy savings on their bills. Would help them, um, you know, meet their own bottom line. But uh, again, totally, totally on board with all of the stuff that the city is already doing and would love to see that we actually expand on that. So that other folks in the city can uh, can get on board with that too.
Thank you, Nikki. Hugo, and uh, right before you go, I'll go ahead and repeat the question. Uh, can you give us an example of how you've supported Tempe residents in achieving a climate or livability outcome? Uh, you'll have to unmute yourself, Hugo.
I think the um, one of the things that um, that I think about where it begins with me is uh, is really through education, right? Like, I mean, I'm an, I'm an educator, I think that it's important to um. Uh, to begin with that process, so, so about three years ago, my wife and I decided to downsize because. Uh, living in a five-bedroom home with just the two of us uh made absolutely no sense. Um, and um, our kids were all grown up and, and time to allow. Uh, another family to move into the home that we cherished for eighteen years, right? So, um, so we decided to move and downsize to a smaller home and. And one of the things that we decided at the time was to um. Install solar uh into our, into our home. Which opened up really an incredible opportunity for conversation uh with our neighbors, with our. Our family members, um, beginning to, to actually talk about uh. Really the need to continue to develop our rooftop um sustainability and utilizing solar. And contributing to the grid, not necessarily just to save money, but also to contribute. Uh, to that environmental uh piece, that it's a social responsibility that we have. Which is something that I think it's, it's critical to, to actually engage in that conversation. Um, and, and engage with people uh and touch upon their social responsibility. Uh, to do the things that actually are going to make a difference uh in the future. Now, one of the things that I collaborated with, um, while I was actually working for Phoenix Elementary School District, which is. Uh, really an idea that just continues to bounce in my head, um, through the Mullin Foundation, um. And also through a grant, through the Vitalist Foundation, uh, we developed a community garden, right? And um, with the purpose of actually um, making. Or e- exposing the community that, that did not have access to uh something that, that was sustainable. For food stability and, and, and availability of, of healthy foods and things like that. Um, we developed this, this garden and it was incredibly, incredibly successful. The engagement of the, of the children, of the kids um, uh, was phenomenal. And one of the things that I think about is that, that's something that our city needs, um. And we need to continue to kind of collaborate with um, with those foundations that actually have a purpose. In our, in our city, in our state, um, Vitalist is, is heavily involved with those uh. Uh, with those endeavors and, and I think we can collaborate uh quite effectively uh with them to develop programs. That are meaningful to the community. One of the things that I, that I wanted to talk about, you know. Homelessness is one of those things that we talk about and trying to find solutions uh to them and. It's, it was really a fascinating thing when I went to the Sustainability Commission meeting the other day. And one of your commission members was talking about um, her work. And how she mentors um homeless individuals to actually work in the farm. And, and have, and develop the skills on how to really become more sustainable themselves. Um, and learn the skills to be a part of that community. Um, and, and kind of develop a community of farmers, um, that actually. Um, are sustaining themselves to make sure that, uh, but at the same time, it kind of creates a path for them. For healthy living and a, and, and a commitment to each other um, to, to do that. So it's a, it's a human sustainability alone with really utilizing resources, utilizing some. Maybe some, some areas in, in our green spaces to do really good work when it comes to those things. And engaging people into actually functional behavior. Um, because that's really what, what is, what is quite important. Um, so I think, I think that's one of the things that I, that I would like to um, explore, um. If uh, if I'm uh fortunate enough to be in this space uh at the council level. Because I think it's important to have innovative ideas about what to do. Uh, with populations that have difficulty in our city. Um, and, and utilize resources that we have, um, with uh. With different ideas to, to put together something that is gonna be meaningful. So, so I think, I think in some ways, um, education is critical because um. We also have to educate our, our future learners, our future adults. It's, it's really interesting to me that even at the high school level, you know, we don't have. We have sustainability clubs, but we don't have system, sustainability curriculum. Um, and uh, and to me, that's uh, that's important to, to begin to have that conversation. Uh, even at the state level with the Department of Education to, to really begin to open up the, the. The window of opportunity that we have with our youth uh to implement that seed.
Thank you, Hugo. Uh, David, uh, and I'll repeat the question for you too. Uh, can you give us an example of how you've supported Tempe residents in achieving a climate or livability outcome?
Sure, thanks. Um, let's see, uh, uh, I'll preference my, my, my remarks here is, is, I feel like a man ahead of my time. And, and, and I, and I tell you what, thirty years ago, um, you know, we were uh putting forth. The proposition that maybe we should be revising our parking space requirements for new development. And, and cut down on the, 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 uh, uh, cut, cut down on those, those, those parking spaces. Um, and, and to encourage people to go to a different mode of, of transportation. I've probably ninety percent of the time of the last three decades. I've never owned a, uh, I didn't own a car. Uh, I do own a car now. Uh, but um, I've got three, I've got three bicycles in my garage. One of which is an e-bike because it gives me a little bit more distance. Uh, but during the time that I didn't have a car, I, I relied on bicycle and public transportation. And it worked out really, really well because we had a, a, a pretty decent system. And, and uh, I was adaptable and so, you know, I was an early adapter for these uh applications and. So it made uh life on public transportation much, much easier, but um, you know, uh. More, you know, I've, I've advocated for uh over these years for uh, um, you know, better and more uh bicycle lanes. Safer bicycle lanes. Uh, and those, those were, you know, just the things, and, and I, I, Corey, I think you remember when we were. Talking about the McClintock Bike Lane. And, and uh, you know, I testified in that, I testified in the form of a poem about a bicycle. But uh, I advocated for uh, for, for that and, and uh, uh, have done so for, for uh, you know, quite some time, so. Um, going back to, you know, uh, a couple of general plans before. Those were the kinds of things that we were, we were looking for, uh, you know, we didn't call it sustainable. We didn't call it, you know, uh, much of anything other than, let's, let's reduce, uh, let, let's reduce the, the uh, um, the. Let, let's reduce the, the uh parking requirements and maybe we'll have fewer cars. Uh, and so, uh, and in fact, it, it goes back, I, I wrote letters to the editor in the early seventies. About the possible, uh, we, we look at the possibility of uh public transportation as opposed to U S Highway sixty. Uh, I wrote that uh, six months after I got home from Vietnam. The response to that letter to the editor was that I was probably a pseudo-intellectual communist. For, for uh, suggesting uh public transportation, multimodal types of transportation. So um, you know, I've done those things on my own and, and in coordination with other folks, neighbors and. You know, participated in, in, in various things, but uh, I, I, I think that we really need to um. Give it a, a, a gun, again, a good, hard look. Uh, we have to build models of opportunity. Uh, I think that's the role of the city. And once we do the, and, and that, that gets very complex and it gets, you know, very all-encompassing. I'm not saying it's easy, but if it was easy, everybody would be doing it, right? But if it was easy, everybody would be doing it, right? And, and so, uh, but, but this is what it takes. It, it takes these kinds of commitments to build these models of opportunity, not only now, that, that, you know, part of the conundrum here is, we need this stuff now. We don't need it in 30 years. We need it now. And, and, uh, and so, um, that, that's kind of the, the perspective I'm coming from. And, and then, you know, it, it entails so much detail, uh, that, that, uh, you know, we could go on for weeks talking about this stuff. But, um, you know, the, 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 the top line is, I wanna make sure that we build models of opportunity, uh, with, uh, with liberty and justice for all. So, um, that's, that's kind of my perspective. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. Uh, and, and thank you very much for all your contributions towards sustainability. Uh, all these efforts are very valid and, and all have progressed sustainability in our city. Uh, and I know that I'm very appreciative, uh, for you fostering a place, uh, for me as an emerging professional and emerging student, um, to navigate that space. So thank you. Um, with that, I'm, I'm, we're, we're gonna close out on that question. Uh, everyone was pretty enthusiastic about all the questions, and there was robust dialogue, which I really appreciate. Um, so first and foremost, I did wanna commune, uh, I did wanna mention that Doreen Garland, uh, had the intention of attending, but had some extenuating circumstances. And though she did, uh, wanna share that she's a big supporter of the sustainability across the city and intends to assist and support Sustainability and Resiliency Department and Commission to meet its goals. Um, next, I wanna thank all the candidates on behalf of Arizona Forward and our Tempe constituents, uh, for being willing to partake in a forum specifically dedicated to the sustainability and resiliency of Tempe. Uh, I really honestly enjoyed hearing your perspective, uh, and I'm excited to see those of you who are elected enact some of your solutions. And if you're not, there, through evidence of the response to this final question, uh, there's so many spaces to still bring your vision of Tempe to fruition, uh, outside of holding a council seat. Um, so that also goes for everyone tuning in. Uh, again, there are a lot of spaces to bring your vision of where Tempe is headed to fruition. Um, so thanks for attending today. Um, thank you, all council members, and I'll hand this off to Lori.
Yes, I'd just like to echo what Jake says. Thank you so much for participating. For those of you who may have tuned in late, Arizona Forward is a nonprofit environmental organization. We've been around for 54 years, and all of the, from, all of the issues that we talked about today are critical to the future of Tempe and the future of our state. So, thank you, mayor and candidates, and also thank you to Jake and Kendon for helping us, uh, put this together. So get out and vote.